All right. Good afternoon, everyone. We've got over 500 people on the call today, and we're going to get our town hall meeting started. I've got a hard stop at 4:30 today, and so we have to wrap it up by then. We're hosting a group of students at our home tonight, one of the dinner with eight bears, and Gail likes me to help and be there in advance of that. And so we'll have to stop at 4:30. Ryan, let's put our agenda up so everybody knows what we're going to talk about. And so we'll give you the latest COVID-19 update, including where we are on vaccinations. We'll talk about our wellness incentive for next year. And then we'll talk about our return to campus principles. And then we've got a couple of announcements to make at the end. And then, of course, you all know how to do questions. Use the Q and A feature on Zoom. Suzanne, again, is going to emcee that and ask the questions that you send in. We would, again, remind you to not comment on things you hear on the Q and A feature because that makes it more challenging to get the questions asked. To help me answer your questions, I've got some of our leadership team and our subject matter experts with us, and I've got the three Davids. David Claiborne, David Maggie, and David Hall are with us. Jeff Koiner, Rachel Dockery, Matt Morris, Wes Pratt, Dee Cisco, Jim Baker, and Frank Einhelling. We are also recording this, and so if you want to go back and look at anything or if you have colleagues that were not able to attend today, it will be posted next week. As always, let's do our first poll question and see who is on the call. You guys are old pros at this by now, so we're going to pop this up for about 30 seconds and then take it off and show you the answer. All right, five seconds. All right, Jessica, pop the answer up here. Good, so we've got 318 staff and 114 faculty and 36 administrators. Very good. All right, let's roll into our first topic, and that's always my least favorite topic, and that's COVID-19, except we have some good, good, good things to report here. So this is our data through March and maybe into that first week of April. And you can see that over the last 11 weeks, we have had 20 or fewer new cases each week. Week 10 was spring break. We had no reported cases that week. We've been under, under 10 new cases a week for each of the last eight weeks. That should stretch to nine because we have five cases in week 13 so far. Week one and two were higher because that was when we did our move back into the residence hall asymptomatic testing. We tested about 3,000 people moving into the residence hall and caught people that were asymptomatic and were able to keep them out of our housing population to start the semester. We see how that compares to last semester. The red line on the chart is where we are this semester. The fall is the, is the maroon chart, and so you can see our numbers are tremendously better. Other than that first peak couple of weeks of January, we have been on a really good, steady trajectory of, of new cases, seven-day rolling average, and you see those. Let's move on to testing, and you'll see sometimes people ask, well, are you, are you not testing anyone? Is that why your, your results are lower? No, we've actually tested more this semester than last semester. And you see our test results, we've consistently been testing every week this semester, and the results, again, have been tremendously low. We continue to house people who either need to go into quarantine or need to be isolated. And we are keeping people this semester either in the Christina, if they have a positive test, or Kentwood, if they're awaiting a test or need to be quarantined. Again, the, the takeaway here, if you look from March 12 through the end of March, we've housed one person. And, and so we will be letting the lease on the Christina go at the end of this semester as no longer necessary. This next chart summarizes the whole month of March. Let's see, this is the comparison from, from last semester. Again, significantly different. All right, this next chart summarizes March. Only 15 total student cases for the whole month of March, five employee cases. You'll see our positivity rate for surveillance is zero. The positivity, positivity rate at majors, and that's for the people that are symptomatic. Hey, I think I'm sick. I need a, I want to see if I have COVID or the doctor wants to see if, if you have COVID. Literally, under 5% or one out of 20 people that are testing is coming back positive there. You see the testing for March as well as the total doses of vaccine that we administered in the month of, month of March. And so we are shifting our focus from testing to vaccinations. And so here's the, here are the numbers of folks that we have vaccinated at our own clinic through the month of March. It was 6255. We keep track of that on the dashboard every day. If you looked, I looked at the dashboard today, that number as of today is 7,530, and that doesn't count what we've done the last two days at Hammond Student Center. We'll, I will be right at 6,000 people that are fully vaccinated. We added that to the, to the folks in Green County who are fully vaccinated in two days. And I credit David Hall and Karen McGinnis and their teams for just doing really good work. And so here I'm going to ask you a poll question. Don't put it quite up yet, Jessica, but I'm going to ask you if you were, if you have been vaccinated. If you have been vaccinated. And so if you've only gotten the first shot and you're waiting to get the second next week or the week after, you should answer yes. So if you have gotten a dose of vaccine, either both shots, the first, first shot of a Moderna or Pfizer vaccine or the J and J vaccine, whether you got it here at Hammond Student Center, one of the hospitals, anywhere else, if you have been vaccinated, answer yes to this poll question. Go ahead, Jessica, pop it up. This is an anonymous question. Nobody will know how you answered, but we have 599 people on the call. So I answered the question yes and submitted it. We'll give you about 15 more seconds here, and we'll see how we've, how we've done so far of the folks that are on this call. All right, Jessica, let's go ahead and pop the results up here. Excellent, folks. 88% of the people on the call have been vaccinated. That's, that's tremendous. I applaud you for, for taking that steps. Want to give you a little bit of Springfield information. And so this next chart shows seven-day average of cases in Springfield. And you can see, and we all know this from, from watching the news and knowing what's going on. November, December, January, we're, we're challenging times in our city. But much like the university has come way down in February and March, you can see that the city has come way down in February and March as well. I think Drury has reported out, you know, they've got about 1,200, 1,300 students that live at Drury, no cases at Drury for the last five or six weeks in a row. And so things in our community are so much better today than they were even in January and certainly where we were in November and December. And so we began focusing on winding down and removing some of the restrictions. And so you probably have seen this. This is on the dashboard that the City of Springfield Health Department has. And last week, the, or several weeks ago, the Springfield City Council adopted these metrics based on science and recommendation of the Green County Health Department as well as the physicians that they interact with at the hospitals. We've been in this red category, and the red category is having more than 40 cases per day, having more than 50 people in the hospital, and having less than 25% of our adult population vaccinated. The result of that has been we're going to have occupancy limits of 50% in inside stores, restaurants, bars, churches, et cetera. Masking is required. Physical distancing is required. When we move into yellow, under 40 cases a day, under 50 hospitalizations per week with 25% of our population vaccinated, well, then those occupancy limits are going to come off unless the gathering is more than 500. But masking will continue to be required, and they'll continue to recommend that you distance yourself from others. And then the green or the masking requirement comes off and, and the other limitations come off completely when we get to, as a city, under 20 cases per day, under 20 hospitalizations at any given time, and we've vaccinated more than 50% of our residents. And it says there, 238,871 adults live in Springfield. So where are we as of, Ryan, was this this morning?
Yeah, yes.
So here, here's where we are right now in Springfield. This is updated every weekday, and so Monday it'll be updated again. And so you'll see we're in the green area for number of, of new cases a day. On average, that's between 18 and 19 new cases a day. On average, we're in the yellow area for hospitalizations, about 32 hospitalizations a week. And before our big vaccine event this weekend, we had 22.3, 31% of the adults in Springfield, Green County had been fully vaccinated. So remember, I asked you guys, have you had your first shot? Answer yes. This, this chart is fully vaccinated. So if you got the J and J today or yesterday, you're fully vaccinated. If you got both shots of Moderna or Pfizer, you're fully vaccinated. If you've only gotten your first Pfizer or Moderna shot, you would have to, you're not fully vaccinated, and they would not be counting you yet. And so the city council anticipates that by Friday, a week from today, we'll be over the 25% of our adult population in Green County that is fully vaccinated. And so that will move into yellow. And the result of that is the city council has voted that next, as of next Friday, the occupancy limits on, on indoor things below 500 go away. They also anticipate that it will take us probably until the end of May to get to the point where all of these metrics are in green, and that's when they're anticipating repeal of the masking ordinance in Springfield. Let's go to the next chart. So obviously, maybe the understatement of, of the year is the heading on, on this slide. Vaccines are important. Vaccines are really, really important. They are available to all adults right now at no cost. We have been administering the Pfizer vaccine at majors, two doses separated by three weeks. We are going to be allowed to keep whatever J and J vaccine was not utilized yesterday and today. And so going forward, I think we'll have the option for you to either get a Pfizer vaccine or a Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine at Major's Health and Wellness Center. And as we all know, we've been hosting a, a mega vaccine event at Hammond Student Centers. I volunteered this morning and did a five-hour shift. It's been a long time since I stood for five hours, but I'm happy, I was happy to do it. And we've gotten over 3,200 people through just today and expect to knock out another thousand by 5 o'clock. Here, here's why vaccines, let's go back one, Ryan. Here, let, let me talk to you just for a minute about why I think that vaccines are so important. As you all know, we had two staff members, longtime staff members die from COVID-19, one in their 60s, one in their 50s. And if we are going to prevent death, prevent people from having major sicknesses, not just you, but your coworkers, it's important that we get as many of our employees, as many of our students, as many of the residents that live in Springfield and Green County vaccinated. You know, I've been vaccinated, as has my wife, my 87-year-old mother. Our whole leadership team has been vaccinated. Every living president, including President Trump, has been vaccinated. For us to return to normal, for, to go back fully to class, to work, family activities, entertainment, travel, it's going to be critically important that we all get vaccinated. The most important thing for me is I don't want any of our university family to have to experience what those two families did when they lost a loved one. And so it's more than just about getting the vaccine to protect yourself. That's important, but it's getting the vaccine to protect your coworkers, your family, and the people that you love in our communities. And so to, to give an incentive for this, and this is the next slide. You know, every year we give a, if you do certain things, then we take a certain chunk off of your, of the money that you owe to pay for your health insurance. And so we've done biometrics. We've done a variety of things over the years. This year, two things to get the $30 a month discount. One is to get the COVID vaccine. The second is to get the flu vaccine. You'll need to get both of those vaccines to get these discounts prior to December 1st. But let me again encourage you, get the COVID vaccine now. Don't wait till the fall. Flu vaccine won't be available till September, October, and we'll put out widely on that. But, but that's going to be how the wellness incentive is done next year, 2022. You can see the details here at this website. And of course, we always post the slides so that you can go to that. If for some reason you cannot get the vaccine because of a physical condition or because a, of a sincere religious belief, there's an accommodation procedure that you can go through. All right, let's go to the next topic. All right, our last topic today is return to campus. Again, I hope everybody reads the Cliff Notes that Ryan worked so hard to put together every week and that I edit and go up. But this week, we talked about, on Tuesday, these three topics. We talked about COVID-19. We talked about the wellness incentive, and we talked about our return to campus principles. We're not calling it return to work because we've all been working pretty hard all year, but it's return to campus. And so that document is available. It's posted. It's in that Cliff Note. The email where, or the, the link is in this slide. But our students are going to be, are going to be back on campus in the fall. And so we need to be back on campus in the fall. Our offices need to be open for regular hours. We need to have our supervisors and, and most of our employees working on campus, particularly those, you see, who have face-to-face interaction with students and regularly interact in the community or with our campus, who are, who are performing the reception role. And so it's going to be important that, that we're, that we're coming back to campus. Next slide. And so we are not going to have very many people working remotely on a full-time basis. A handful. You know, Brent Dunn in Development has a, an employee who does all, who does data work, and she lives in Virginia. Well, she'll continue to work remotely. I think of the people in, in Matt Morris's shop, you know, he's got about 250 employees there. There are one or two people whose jobs allow them to work from home. Again, there will be some decentralization to this. Supervisors do have some discretion working through their chain of supervision to authorize some remote work. But I've asked all of the cost center heads to submit their plan to me so that we have good consistency across divisions and so that we know that most of our folks are here. Something's just lost if our, if we are working mostly from home. And, and that doesn't mean, though, that, that there isn't flexibility in this. You know, there, there are those days when, when you have to be home for four hours because the air conditioner repairman has said he, he or she is going to come between 1:00 and 5:00. You know, in those scenarios, if you're able to work from home, then you count that as work. If you work two hours from home and two hours that you're doing other things, well, then you would, you would put down on your time sheet two hours of work and two hours of vacation time or personal time. And so, so again, we will, there will be some flexibility in this. And so work through your supervisors, your cost center heads, your division leadership. They'll be putting their plans together. Or I've asked to see all the plans here in about two weeks. And so by the end of the semester, the plan will be rolled out. University of Missouri has already announced that all of their employees will be back on campus by the end of this semester in May. We're, we're going to take a little more time and transition over the next several months. But our plan is by, by July and August that the great bulk of our workforce is back on campus. All right. And then the last thing, I've been asked by, by folks to make three announcements, and then we're going to open it up for, for questions. And so we've got staff senate elections coming up, and so you can submit your nominations to the staff senate by April 15. We're also, Rob Hornberger and his team is working on a project to call admitted students. Enrollment is critical. Many of the students in high school this year have had a challenging year, managing through the pandemic, virtual school, part-day school. And so nationwide, students are behind getting their applications in and making decisions about attending college. If, if you like interacting with students and you have some available time, there's the person to email, mmcgruder@missouri state.edu if you would like to volunteer for that. And then the final announcement. We're going to have a, one more town hall meeting, and it's not going to be on COVID. One more town hall meeting virtually this semester, Friday, April 30. So three weeks from today, 3:00. And it's going to be to, to walk you through where we are in the long-range plan and get your input. And so let me encourage you to put that on your calendars and plan to participate with Sean Wall, Dean Sean Wall and Suzanne as they outline where we are in the preparation of the long-range plan. And, and before it's finalized, before we take a final draft to the board at the May meeting, we want everyone in our university community to see where we are and to have the ability to have input. And the best way to do that is attend the town hall virtually on April 30 and share your thoughts with us. All right, with that, we are going to open it up for questions. I see we've got some already in here. I'm going to ask Suzanne to kind of start with the questions based on the topics that we address. So COVID, the wellness incentive, the return to campus principles. We'll handle those questions first, and then we'll move on to anything else that's, that's on your mind that you want to ask the leadership team about. So let me just ask, if you're, if you're one of the people that's available to answer questions today, if you would turn your video back on, we will get started. I see Steve Focart has joined us. All right, Suzanne, take it away.
Okay, we're going to start with the questions that have been upvoted. So the first one is if it is determined that the COVID vaccine needs to be an annual shot, like the flu shot, does MSU anticipate majors will provide both like it has in the past for the flu shot?
Well, let's see, do we have Dr. Maggie on?
We do. He is on by phone.
Dr. Maggie, can you take that one?
Yes, President Smart, I'll be glad to. We're always glad to serve the university community with any necessary vaccines. We do every vaccine that's commonly given in the United States other than yellow fever, which is at the Public Health Department. We annually give, for example, 4,500 to 5,000 flu vaccines. So if they find that booster shots are indicated for COVID, majors would be proud to serve the community by providing it for employees as well as students.
And again, I'm confident it would be at no cost as the flu shot is and as the COVID, current COVID shot is.
Okay. Next question, again, we're going with the upvoting. Will MSU use recommendations of the CDC or local politicians when setting policy for safety of students and faculty? For example, what does the science say about if it is safe to be in a high-density classroom, no social distancing without masks? What percentage of people should be vaccinated in that class to be reasonably safe? And what is the science number for percent, for percentage of vaccinated if everyone in a high, in high-density class is wearing a mask?
Okay, that's a, that's a lot. David, you want to try to unpack that, some of that? And then we'll get some other people to jump in.
Yeah. Yeah, it's probably more of a policy question, but certainly, you know, what we're looking at is we always work closely with the Health Department and with our local leaders, elected leaders. And we, you know, obviously are working with the CDC as far as getting the latest information from them. We tend not to make decisions until that we need to make those decisions. So, you know, some of that, I think it's probably too early to make an actual decision on exactly how we'll do it. So for example, is the city's not even recommended to remove their masking requirement yet. Ours, you know, we'll review ours, whether we're going to extend that in, before the end of May as to whether that will continue on. Last year, we, we didn't make that decision until it was in mid-July or later part of July before we made the decision regarding masking and some of that others. So I, I think, you know, from, from my position of what I'm looking at is obviously, yes, we are working with local health officials, we're local, local elected officials and reviewing CDC guidance, and then we'll make those decisions as we get closer.
Yeah, and I, I, I think it's a false choice there. I mean, I, I think we, we need to, we need to, and we have been working with state leadership, the coordinating board, our city council, and as well as the CDC and the Green County Health Department and Cox and Mercy Hospital leadership. David's on multiple calls with all those people every week. Every two weeks, I'm on a call with, with the local hospital executives and the Green County Director of Health. We have monthly calls with the other universities in town, and we're tracking with our own subject matter experts, David Claiborne, David Maggie, and we're trying to take all of the information in and make the best decisions at the right time. And so, you know, if you look at that Springfield chart of, it hasn't gone exactly as everyone has anticipated. And it served us really well to make decisions based on science and data at the time. And so can't tell you what, what August is going to look like yet, but we'll be working hand in glove with the city as we, as, as they unwind their COVID-19 limitations. And I'm confident we'll begin unwinding ours. Now, we are committed to continuing to operate as we have been this semester through the end of the semester. So no matter what the city does, our masking requirement So no matter what the city does, our masking requirement will stay in place through the end of May. And our, our capacity rules will stay in effect as long as we're having classes and meetings through the end of May as well.
Hey, thank you. The next question, some universities are requiring that their students receive the COVID vaccine and provide documentation on that vaccine. What is our stance on that?
So again, I'm tracking that, so is David and our others. I think there are 11 or 12 universities that have announced that so far. All but one and a half are private universities. The only fully public university to make that decision so far is Rutgers University in New Jersey. Again, it's, it's premature to make that decision today. And so we'll be studying that over the course of the next several weeks and, and we'll make a decision sometime over the summer.
Okay, great, thank you. I don't get flu shots and I do not want the vaccine for a lot of personal reasons. What is the accommodation process?
You'll need to contact Julie Holmes and work through her, just as we do for any other accommodation.
But let me just clarify, however. There is a difference between, between requesting an accommodation as a result of a disability or a sincerely held religious belief versus you simply not wanting a vaccination. There is no accommodation process outside of those who have a religious prohibition or a sincerely held religious belief that is incompatible for vaccination, or someone who has an underlying disability or medical condition which makes the vaccine unsafe. So if you simply don't want to get it, there is not an accommodation process for that. That is a choice that you can make. We will not make you get it, but there is not an accommodation.
And that is, that is our position, that's the board's position, that's how we're moving forward this year.
Okay. The next question is, will the record keeping for the three categories continue into the fall? And if so, may the Springfield City Council take us back to a yellow or red category?
Yeah, they could, they could, right? I mean, we all know that there are, are variants out there that are more contagious. And we think, I think the scientists think the UK variant is the dominant variant in America right now. And so it is certainly possible that, that those metrics can, can go back and forth. We, we've seen the, the, the one that is green today was yellow yesterday, was green the day before, was yellow the day before. And so those can change and I anticipate they will continue throughout the year. And, and we will, we will make decisions, as will the city council, based upon what is happening with the virus in our community.
Okay, thank you. Back to universities requiring students to get the COVID vaccination. You mentioned an incentive for students, how would that work?
Yeah, we're, I've tasked David Hall to put together a group. I, I know our dean of students is a part of that, as are others, to figure that out. You know, we've got a third tranche of, of federal money coming to us sometime this semester. And the question becomes, could we use a part of that? Could we hypothetically give people a $50 coupon credit at the bookstore if they got vaccinated? So, so I don't know that that's what it ends up being. I don't know that that's the number it ends up being. But, but I think we, we've got a team looking to evaluate what would encourage many of our students to get the vaccine, to, to protect themselves and all of us on campus. And so, so we've got a group working on that now. David, you want to comment on that at all, David Hall?
No, we, we really are looking at a lot of variety of stuff. One of the things on our higher ed call this week with the ones from across the state, they'd said one of the most effective things has been t-shirts. You know, it says, I got vaccinated and it kind of builds that, hey, ask me about why. And so we're, we're looking at all the things that we would normally do whenever incentivized anything else with, with other students.
You know, and a part of it is making it as convenient as possible. And so, you know, we've had a come to us mentality so far with the vaccine. That's going to have to turn around where we go to, go to our students. And so that may mean we're in residence halls, we're in PSU, we're in Bear Village, we're, we're in the Aspen, we're where students are setting up smaller clinics to try to vaccinate as many as we can, pairing that with some incentive. We're confident we can get the, the great majority of our students vaccinated in the fall.
Okay, thank you. Still on the topic, and I'm going to, this is a very long question, so I'm going to try and condense it a little bit. Would there be a possibility that we would require a vaccination passport in order to be able to attend a seated class? We, and the background behind that is we require vaccination for children in schools. Our teacher education students must be tested for TB. The state requires meningitis vaccinations for students living in dorms. So is there a possibility that, you know, looking at vaccinations, that we would go that route?
It seems unlikely.
All right. Okay, are there plans for dealing with students who did not get full high school curriculum due to COVID? If they are not yet prepared for passing our courses, what resources will Missouri State have in place to help them?
Dee or Frank, one or both of you want to jump in on that? Sorry.
First of all, I, I think it's going to be very difficult to know that we have that connection to whether or not the, you know, it's a failure due to COVID. We always have some students that need additional help and we try to provide that in a multiple number of ways. All those ways will be available, if not beefed up some to the extent we can. Those include the special helps from the Bear Call, the assistance in GEP 101, which will indeed, you know, have some additional help this fall because of our grant that we have there. And I'm not quite sure where our trio program is going to be, but we still running all the facilities of that operation at the present time. So we'll continue all those things, but we do not have a new program to roll out that's related strictly to COVID that I have had any discussion on.
I might just say, that was a good answer, Frank, I think. But I might just say, we will continue, like you said, all the support services that many of the people on this call are engaged with. And so we'll be working with students, trying to meet them where they are and to see how we can assist through the process.
Okay, thank you. What documentation will employees need to provide if vaccinated at the county health department or somewhere other than majors?
Matt, you want to take that one?
Yeah, happy to. We wanted to be sure to get word out about the wellness incentive early so people could schedule and be encouraged to get the vaccine. Our open enrollment period, when people elect their benefits runs November 1 to December 1. And so as the president mentioned, this wellness incentive of getting your COVID shot for $20 a month and getting your flu shot for $10 a month for a total of $30 a month savings, that will, can take place anytime this calendar year until December 1 of 21. As far as the documentation is concerned, we will be developing a system as we get closer to open enrollment where you can conveniently report your vaccination information, especially those of you who got your vaccine not from majors or not from Mercy where we have contracts or in-house information there. So again, there will be a system that will, will conveniently allow you to report your information. The flu shot will not be available until on into the fall, which is when we traditionally offer the flu shot that many of you have done before.
So I, you get this little card and I got my little card at Jordan Valley Health Center. That's where I was vaccinated. And so, so we'll create a system, as Matt said, that you can scan and turn that in so that you will get credit if you did not get vaccinated in ma, at majors.
Okay, thank you. In what ways is our return to campus plan taking into account the opportunity we have to advance the way we work and teach in a post-COVID community? Increasing online course offerings, distance learning, positive work-life balance, et cetera? Is going back to normal the best practice?
Yeah, I don't think we're going back to normal. For example, Frank, you may want to address what our fall schedule of classes look like. We have significantly more online and significantly more blended classes than we had fall of 19. And I think that's going to be from, for a variety of reasons, including demand and convenience and, and faculty adopting and learning and being excited about creating a new blended class from one that was seeded before. So, so we're, we're not just going to forget everything we've learned in the last 14 months. Frank, you want to take it from the, from the academic side?
Kind of flesh out a little more on a couple of the points you made. The biggest change probably, if we look by comparison, of course, we have to compare to fall 19 and not to fall 20. But we'll have significant increase in our blended class sections. We're currently scheduled for fall with over 700 of those class sections compared to a single digit number back a couple of years. We have 22% of our class sections that are online and that's several percentage points ahead of where we were in fall 19. And again, we have another, several points, actually 153 sections that are video or video conferencing type. To give you some comparison in numbers, that does not necessarily translate into credit hours because a section can quite vary. But it's a hybrid in between where we were and where we ended up with this spring as we go to next fall. It's kind of an in-between.
Yeah, and so for example, the Public Affairs Conference will be a mix of Zoom and live panels this fall because the Zoom strategy allows us to bring in people from all over the world who, who otherwise wouldn't be here to be on a panel or give a keynote presentation. Offices, I know Jeff Koiner, you might want to talk about how you're going to manage your office.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, we've got a number of people that, that are working remotely and they've been very successful doing that. So, you know, we, we plan to continue with, with some of that for, you know, those that, that are able to do it. Obviously, there, there's some that can't, they need to be on campus to support all, all of you that are, that are here as well. But we're going to have a mixture there and, and we've also got some new technology like our phone system. You know, we've been using Zoom and Teams and those types of things. So those aren't going away, we're going to continue to use those where, where it's appropriate.
Yeah, and so I, I would imagine advisors will be doing some Zoom advising meetings and other in-person advising meetings. And I, I would think that, you know, that Brent Dunn on, on alumni kinds of events will do a variety of, of Zoom events that allow people to participate from all over the world and do other in-person events. So, so there'll be a mix of things where, that will continue on. But I do think, and our whole leadership team and our whole academic leadership team believes that a part of our culture is interacting with each other and interacting with students in person. And so we need to have the bulk of our people for most days here. Doesn't mean we're going back to how it was exactly beforehand. So work through your chain of supervision if you're interested in working one day a week or a part of a week or, or in a, in a non-traditional kind of way. And we're open to that to a limited extent.
And I'd like to add in on the class side of things. You know, we have learned a lot about what we can do and how technology can assist us. We will actually have a ramped up view of professional development as we have been for the last six months. And we will continue that because there are things that we still have to learn, even in our traditional classes where we're using more technology. There are components that we know we can help each other in learning about.
Hey, thank you. What is the expectation regarding international students on campus in the fall? Will there be roughly the same number of international students as previous years?
Well, if we go back to 19, the answer, fall of 19, the answer is going to be no. Jim, you want to take that one?
Yeah, we anticipate that the number of students will be very similar to fall of 20, which is around 900, which is down quite a bit as far as students being in Springfield. One of the things that's happened, and back to the last question, the technology's changed a lot. We have a lot of our students are now staying in their home countries. So while the number in Springfield is decreasing, the number overall is staying pretty stable or, or increasing. So part of the mobility from China has really decreased the number of students that can come here. And so, but we're offering classes there, we've offered classes in Russia. So we're taking advantage of the technology, various platforms. And so we're really modifying the way we do some of our international student programs. But we anticipate about 900 students. Brad Bowdenhausen's been working really hard on that. And we'll have to wait and see what the travel restrictions are. It's very dynamic and it changes, so we're, we're kind of waiting to see as well. But in the meantime, we're developing different delivery systems to get the education to the home countries of the students.
Jim and his, and his team have done a great job keeping partnerships alive. You know, right now, if you're in America, it, it's impossible to travel to Europe right now. It's impossible to travel to China unless you have a particular, specific thing they need for you to do. And so we expect those things to unwind as well over the course of the next several months as the world gets vaccinated. And so just not sure that's going to have unwound by August and September. I'm, I'm hoping we will have closer to our normal amount of international students with us by January, where we would hope to have more like 1,500. Still be below our all-time high, but, but would be more than we've had this last year.
Okay, thank you. Will biometrics be available to get the insurance discount? And would it be possible to do the COVID and the biometrics to get the full $30 instead of getting the flu shot?
No, biometrics is not an option this year.
If I may, the biometrics will not be part of the wellness incentive program. But please keep in mind, biometrics is still very much an option for your own wellness plan and is 100% covered by our medical plan.
Okay, thank you. Because it sounds like it will be later rather than sooner as to what our policies regarding masks and socially distancing will be, what guidance can you give faculty for determining, for determining now about flexibility in providing seated classes, but at a smaller percentage of room capacity? Maybe additional sections of seated courses because students aren't registering now?
Yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be working through that over the, over the next couple of months. And the provost and the deans will lead that effort. Right, I think right now, most seated classes are about at 50% capacity for signup. But we're going to see, we're going to have to see what the virus is doing in our community over the next several months. And, and if we're able to get the bulk of our people vaccinated, then I expect that to change. Again, you'll be kept in a loop on that and, and we'll be working that through our academic leadership.
All right, this is a little break from COVID. Will we win the football game tomorrow afternoon?
We're a three and a half point favorite. We'll see.
Okay.
If we win the football game tomorrow afternoon, we are conference co-champs. Picked last, will it finish first? That makes me smile.
Okay, thank you for that break. Now back to COVID. If the CDC states six-foot distancing is still required come fall, will staff who meet face-to-face with students in smaller offices be required to work on campus?
Yeah, so everyone's going to be required to work on campus essentially, at least part of the time. part of the time. Right now, there's not a six-foot rule. There's a three-foot rule with a mask. Again, the world could change. I recognize that between now and the 15th of August. And so we'll be making decisions based upon what it looks like in Springfield and in Missouri over the summer. David, you want David Hall, you want to you want to comment on any kind of CDC recommendation in that question?
Yeah, I really don't. I mean, there was some study that I forwarded Dr. Maggie and Dr. Claiborne earlier this week. And, you know, I think there's still a lot that's being learned about it, and particularly as they look at, you know, masking versus social distancing versus other mitigation strategies that I think that we'll know a lot more over the next three months about.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and again, I think we've got to, you know, we've got to put it into perspective how we operate and how the rest of the world is operating, right? I mean, are we getting on airplanes and traveling? You know, are we going to church on Sundays? Are we going to restaurants that are full? Are we going to friends' parties inside where the house is full? I mean, if we're doing all of those things, we can come to work inside as well.
Okay, thank you. For students who are conducting practicums in the community, for example, student teachers, a practicum pre-service, counseling students, et cetera, will they be required to get the vaccine in order to prevent harm to the community?
David Claiborne, do you know the answer to that? Or David Hall, either one, or David Maggie? One of our subject matter experts needs to weigh in on this one.
I can actually speak to it a little bit. We are already seeing with respect to some of our clinical partners where we send students for a variety of clinical or practical experiences that some are in fact requiring proof of vaccination before students can start there. So I think it is largely dependent upon those relationships. So if you're a faculty member who is working with those community partners, I would be in touch with them now to understand their parameters. Because particularly on the health side, we are seeing that with greater frequency. Not that we're requiring it, but that our partners are before they will accept students.
David Claiborne, anything to add to that? Well, you're on mute there, Dave.
I couldn't have said it better. It depends on the situation. Some of our people are some of the preceptors are requiring the vaccine.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, thank you. I think you've answered this in a couple of ways, but I'm going to ask it directly. Do you plan to have classrooms at 100% capacity in the fall?
Haven't made that decision yet.
Okay. If a person is currently autoimmune compromised and the doctor is recommending not to take the vaccine shot at this time, will this be held against this? Will this prevent the person from working or being penalized for medical incentive as just discussed on the slide? I think you may have answered that, Rachel, but...
Yeah, I'm happy to answer that. So if you have an underlying health condition, whether it is a permanent or temporary health condition, that makes it unsafe for you to take the vaccine based on medical advice, you should request a disability accommodation via our typical practice. That's by contacting our deputy compliance officer, Julie Holmes. And you can work through that process. For example, we know we've already worked with some employees who may have cancer diagnoses right now. They're being treated. They may not be able to currently get the vaccination. So you just need to go through that process, which is interactive. Sometimes it requires coordination with your medical team, but that is a normal part of our accommodations process.
Again, you know, the wellness incentive is for '22. And so you have until December 1 to get it. And so, you know, if it's a temporary condition, it may clear up and allow you to do so. If it's a permanent condition, then the accommodation process is set up. We don't want you to take a shot that would endanger your health.
Okay, thank you. Will any additional measures be taken to ensure air handling systems in older buildings are adequate with regard to air quality?
Matt, that question goes to you.
Thanks. We're going to continue our practices we've been doing, which is the MERV-13 air filters, staff working on cleaning air handling unit coils, working on equipment. And so, again, those practices will continue, pumping in outside air to the appropriate measure as appropriate, depending on which building. And so Brad Kilhoffner and his team are working very diligently on that.
Okay, thank you. Will the COVID leave policy continue this fall or expire now that vaccines are widely available?
Yeah, so right now, the COVID leave policy goes through June 30. And so, you know, if I was looking into my crystal ball, I would not count on it existing beyond then. But we haven't made that decision yet. We'll be looking at all of our COVID policies, you know, beginning of May to make decisions on which continue on into the summer. Again, our strategy has been, and I know this is frustrating for people, I really do, but it has served us well, is to make decisions at the right time and not be predicting what the virus is going to do or predicting how many people are going to be vaccinated or et cetera. And so so we'll be looking, we've got a we've got multiple work groups. David Hall coordinates those. They're meeting now, and we'll be making decisions in May about what policies continue over the summer. And then in the summer, we'll be making decisions about what policies continue into the fall.
It might be helpful just to add that the Families First Coronavirus Response Act required employers to implement emergency COVID-19 leave through December 31. Based on the fact that it was widely utilized by our campus community in 2020, we voluntarily chose to extend that through June 30. We're not required to, but we thought that made sense. However, as you might expect from the COVID-19 numbers that President Smart shared at the beginning of the presentation, we haven't had a lot of COVID on campus. And so that benefit that we extended has been used very, very little this semester. Also emphasizing that at this point, it seems unlikely that it's needed beyond June 30. But again, not a final decision that's been made.
Yep.
HR has processed 422 people. Is there how many people have used the emergency paid leave? And as Rachel indicated, it has been certainly plateauing here recently.
Good. Thank you, folks.
Okay, thank you. And we have a we have a news break. And not to steal David Hall's thunder, but it says our mega vaccine event broke a state record, 4,000 plus today, total of 5,700 plus. And we still haven't reached the end.
We're going to hit 6,000 today, and that's a great thing for our community.
Breaking news, we already have. They just haven't posted it yet.
All right. Okay, back to our programming. I am worried for my son. He will be 15 in May. Are there any vaccines that will be approved that children at that age will be able to take?
David Claiborne, are you tracking that issue?
I know the research is going on. I do not have a projected date for that. Dr. Maggie might have that.
Pfizer has been doing work already, the 12 to 16 group, with very favorable results. They did a control group against the vaccine group, had 18 cases in the control non-vaccine group, and they had zero cases in the vaccine group. So they have impressive data to present to the FDA. It's just a matter of when the FDA will approve. And if they do approve, then we'll be prepared to administer that to the appropriate age group, 12 to 16 at majors.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Maggie.
Okay, thank you. Will the no food and beverage rule in classrooms remain? If there is an all-day workshop in a room, is it required to follow this mandate?
Well, we're going to keep the no food and beverage rule through the end of the semester. You know, again, I think we expect I think we expect you to manage through an all-day situation with reason. And, you know, you obviously have have the flexibility to do that. I mean, people got to drink and eat during the day. Frank, any thoughts on this?
We haven't made any different plans, obviously. We have typically had instructor some discretion of not having food, but it hasn't been a total mandate. It has been for many events in our big that's been posted for many events in our big classrooms, but hadn't been a mandate for individual classes.
Yeah. So again, I think you have the flexibility to work through that. Until we have more people vaccinated, however, I would encourage people that are in a normal 50-minute or hour and 15-minute class to enforce that rule. The best way to keep anyone from spreading the vaccine is to be wearing a mask if you're inside with a group of folks.
Okay, thank you. Will freshmen be allowed to be fully online in fall 2021?
Yeah, I don't think we're doing that, Dee, are we?
I haven't been engaged in any conversation yet about that.
I think you'd have to divide that into, you know, there are some freshmen who are not required to live on campus. And so they fall under a different set of conditions than those that live in our dorms. So you might have some freshman students living at home in the within the parameters. And if they can find satisfactory online classes, which are number is much fewer at the freshman level, but I don't think we have any restrictions on that.
Yeah, that's a that's a that's a good insight, Frank. If you live in Springfield or Nixa or Ozark, and your student wants to live at home and wants to take all online classes, I think that's probably available. Is a GEP 101 class online option available?
Yes.
So so you could do that. I think it's probably not a good strategy unless there's some underlying health issue that that makes that imperative. But it looks like it's possible. Now, what you couldn't do is live in St. Louis and take all online classes because we have a residency requirement.
Okay, thank you. Does the two weeks out from dose number two or dose number one, if you've got J and J, need to be met before being able to claim I'm fully vaccinated?
Who wants to do that? Dr. Maggie?
Yes, two weeks is the standard reference point for all three of the currently EUA-approved vaccines in the United States. Two weeks after the vaccination before you're considered fully protected in the single-dose case, and two weeks after the second vaccination before you're considered fully protected in the Pfizer and Moderna cases.
Okay, thank you. And I think we've answered this question. This came in a little earlier, but just to be clear, can we clarify the calendar dates for eligibility on the wellness program?
It's December 1, isn't it, Matt?
I think where you would get your vaccines, I think it would start would have started in January?
Correct. You get your vaccines anytime calendar year 21, up until December 1 of '21. That's the end date. And again, our open enrollment period, just like we've done for several years now, is November 1 to December 1. That's when you would be reporting your information.
Yep. So we may have had a handful of people that got the vaccine in December. You know, if you were a healthcare worker, for example, you got to go first. That still counts. That still counts for your 22 wellness incentive, if you were one of the lucky people that got it right at the end of December.
Okay, great. Will our vacation max out be extended again?
No. And so I would encourage everyone to use their vacation by June 30. That's that's my goal. I've encouraged my team to take their vacation. And so, again, everyone should be looking to take their vacation. It will go back to normal carryforward. Matt, remind us what normal carryforward is?
Depends on your position, but you get to keep double of what your accrual is. So if you are one that accrues 20 days of vacation a year, you can keep 40 days.
Right. Again, so and so on July 1, your if your vacation group will come down to a max of 40, correct, Matt?
Correct. Thanks.
Okay, this next one, I don't really understand it. So I'm going to read it word for word because I think there are those who will, I just don't. Will attendance policies be adjusted at the university level to allow occasional Zoom attendance in a seated class for a variety of circumstances? Or will this be by a by instructor decision? And a follow-up, will technology be updated to allow for this possibility?
Right.
The overall attendance policy has always been with the discretion of instructors, and there is variation. But I would anticipate that we will continue. Now we have more options for instructors. So I think different people will be making different decisions than they have made in the past. But I have no plans to mandate that they have to abide by some general rule from this office.
You know, we've got a lot of classrooms now that are connected with Zoom. And so as an earlier question indicated, we shouldn't just stop using Zoom because, you know, if 80% of our population is vaccinated, there's still opportunities to use Zoom to allow students, for whatever reason, who can't attend, to attend class by Zoom if the room is so equipped. And so, again, that's something individual faculty members will will get to deal with if they're operating in a in a room that is equipped with the with the Zoom feature.
Okay, thank you. Will we receive a COVID-19 vaccine record card instead of the printed sheets?
David Hall?
Every person getting a vaccine should have gotten a card that whenever they went through and got vaccinated. And that would be regardless what type they got or where they got it. Everybody should have gotten a card.
Yep. That was what I pulled out of my wallet that I got at Health Center. Little little, what, three two-by-three-inch kind of card that's got a sticker for the date or two stickers for the date you were vaccinated. Dr. Maggie, do you want to weigh in? Nope. Okay.
Okay, that covers most of our questions. I we do have a comment from a student that T-shirts are a big plus. And I would guess that would be as an incentive for vaccine for the vaccinations.
Thank you for that input.
So I think we have pretty much covered all the questions that I am seeing.
Okay. All right. Again, thank you for tuning in. Any other topics besides the COVID wellness vaccine incentive that anybody sent in?
Oh, wait, let me see. Here come here's one. I apologize. Just came in. With the toll COVID-19 has taken on so many with regard to mental health, it could be helpful to remind all the staff and faculty on the webinar, we have free counseling available through the EAP if anyone is struggling.
Yep. Matt, anything else to add to that?
No, that's a great point. We appreciate whoever brought that up, that they did so. HR regularly will put that inside Missouri State in their section, also reminding people of that. But it's counseling sessions, financial sessions. I would really encourage folks to look at our EAP program, which is good for full-time employees and for part-time employees as well.
Yep.
Okay, and we have more clarification on the card versus printed-out paper. So it says at majors, they received printed pages. Cards were only available at majors for the second shot. The nurse only signed the second shot.
I tell you what, why don't we have that person email David Hall? And David will give you a call. I think David, it's just D Hall, the letter D, hall@missouri state.edu. If you'll reach out to David, he'll be happy to visit with you on the phone and then and then follow up. He'll have someone on his team follow up if we need to. Folks, thanks for joining us on a Friday afternoon. And thank you for working so well together and so hard and supporting our students through what has to be the most challenging academic year anyone's ever gone through. Five more weeks. year anyone's ever gone through. Five more weeks. Let's finish strong. Have a great weekend.